All right. Welcome, everybody. And thank you all for waiting while we were meeting in executive session. Members of the public who wish to watch our meeting may do so online and use Acton TV's YouTube channel to do so. And as a note for everyone in the room, this meeting is being recorded on Acton TV, by Acton TV, and it'll be on Acton TV's website as well, so you can relive your recognition in perpetuity on Acton TV's website. We will start this evening with some wonderful recognition of both our girls swim and dive team and the A.B. marching band. Peter?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you. It's awesome to have such a crowd at a school committee meeting. I'm sure you were here anyway for the meeting and not just this part of it. You know, when I, I'm gonna first talk about the marching band, so maybe I could have George Arseneau come up, and then I have five seniors, including two of our drum majors, two co-band presidents, and one of our color guard captains that I'd also like to ask come up. Obi Uma, Ev Bartley, Alex Wa, Sarabi Sina, and Aubrey Marino. So, we wanted to bring in the representatives of the marching band because they had an absolutely tremendous year this year. I know I get to go listen to your pre-show before you headed over to the big competition. It was awesome to see, just really, really well done. But they were named the Group 5A State Champions at the U.S. Bands Finals Competition in Stoughton this year. They performed their amazing visions in Blue Show, and so congratulations to George and all of the students in the marching band, and thank you so much for coming. I will say that as a former musician and high school band director, it always gives me great pride to be able to recognize the awesome music department that we have, so thank you. Now, I want to talk about the girls swim team, and, you know, everyone thinks when we say like sports dynasty, we think of like the Patriots, but I would actually argue that the Patriots have nothing compared to our swim and dive program here at Acton Boxboro. Really, just absolutely amazing program, so consistently over such a long period of time. And so, I'm going to invite up, let's see, and I'm not reading the marching band portion of this anymore. Yeah, thank you. I'm first gonna invite Athletic Director Jim Scanlon and Coach Turner up. And then, we have four senior captains tonight. Katie Baxter, Isabella Tashara, Carolyn Terrell, and Emily Zhu. Along with a whole bunch of members of the swim team that are not on my list, and I apologize. So, just congratulations, this and school committee members. If you don't know, this team won another state championship this year, which is another in a very, very long line of just absolutely outstanding performance sustained for a long period of time. So, we wanted to have you into the school committee meeting, and thank you, Coach Turner, for everything you do, but really, congratulations to the whole team on just outstanding performance year after year. So, congratulations and thank you. Oh, actually, quite honestly, and I forgot about this, I apologize. I was so concerned with the fact that I've hit the age where they now give me one contact to see far away and one contact to see anything I read, and they work sometimes, that I totally forgot. I wanted to invite Gretchen and George to just talk about your programs a little bit, because I think, you know, both of you have been so tremendously successful. It's just a great opportunity for the school committee and members of the community to hear a little bit more about what you've done. So, Gretchen, I'll turn it over to you first.
And thank you, Peter Light, and the school committee for having us and allowing us to say some words, because I think there are some community members and businesses and parents that we wanted to thank for all their accomplishments and getting us to where we are. So again, my Gretchen Turner. So this group is no stranger to success, as they've won three state championships in the last four years. Truly something to be proud of. But their success and strength go far beyond their trophies. They are a cohesive group, a group that has tremendous family and friend support, and a drive to not only succeed but truly enjoy each and every moment together. So, so much so, they did, really did not want to finish this season at all. A new fundraising effort this group started last year was reaching out to local businesses for sponsors. They advertise these sponsors in their home meet programs and throughout the website. I want, I want these community businesses to know how much of an impact they've had. New training equipment has been helped everyone get to the same access to achieving their goals. Funds have helped give much deserved recognition to the team through banquets and new banners, and assisted-supporting team apparel fostering revolution spirit. Beyond the massive talent these girls possess and incredible work ethic they bring every day, there is an immense foundation, as Peter Light attested to in the program of Acton Boxboro going back over half a century. Those years have instilled fun traditions, lessons in team before self, and provided a sense of purpose for everyone. Those that came before set the example and tone for these girls to carry on and be so successful. Our seniors have continued that energy and given the tools for underclassmen to shine after they're gone. So again, we thank you for having us here today. It means a lot to us and it shows how proud you are of this team, so we're extremely grateful for the support by the entire community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is George Arseneau. I'm the Director of Performing Arts for the whole school district, and as one of the very favorite parts of my job, I still get to direct the marching band. We have a tremendous group of students, and we're really fortunate. This is kind of a time of year we talk about gratitude a lot, and what we're grateful for, we are so grateful for a community that supports the arts the way that it does. And the marching band, I hope you see it. I hope you can come to a game, come to rehearsal, go to parade, there's lots of them, and see this group of kids working. It's a tremendous thing to see. They're working really hard, it's not always easy, and they achieve at an extremely high level. So, I'm so grateful for my students. I'm really, really grateful that one of them offered to speak and say a couple of things tonight as well. So, this is Obi, one of our drum majors, and he's gonna talk a little bit about our community, and from far beyond the music and the achievement and the accolades, what the band is really about at A.B.
Yes, so, hi, everyone. My name is Obi Uma. I'm one of our senior drum majors at A.B. And yeah, Mr. A said, it's not easy sometimes. It's definitely not. Most people don't know much about marching band, but we actually start two weeks before school, right? So, we put in around 40 hours, something, a little higher. Okay, okay. It goes by pretty fast, right? But we put in a lot of work just to make sure that when we hit that school day and when we start school, the school year starts, we are, we are reduced in the amount of time that we can spend on our instruments and working on our craft and learning new drill, where to be on the field, what to play on the field, and when to play on the field, right? So, we spend a lot of time in the off-season, working really hard, so that when we're in-season, we already have like a jump. And so, this year was a new year, a new circuit, right? We traditionally perform and compete at MICA, but this year, we chose to branch out to a circuit called the U.S. Bands. And so, this year, we, we actually won. We won, we are the biggest band in the land. We won Class 5A, so we are the biggest and best band in all of our, like, New England states. And it was, it was well-deserved. It was very, very well-deserved. I mean, and it was, it was a great feeling. I mean, a lot of blood, a lot of sweat, a lot of tears, a lot of tears. And, but we did it. And it was, it was definitely something to reflect on, but even though it's such a great feat that we accomplished, like, just knowing how much we worked to build up to that feat is what made it all that much better. We had countless parades. We have parades coming, but we have, we had some parades, we had some performances at games, and we had some, like, preseason, like, we had, we had our, like, our trial run at UMass Amherst, where a lot of things went wrong, but we still were able to go out okay. But yeah, it's just, it was, it was so nice to reflect on the work and, like, the immense group, the, like, immensely talented group of kids that we have in this marching band. We're marching around 100, 120 strong, and it's, it's great. We are such a diverse student body. We've got over, I don't know, 20, 30 clubs, double digits in sports, too. It's like, we're, we're not just band kids, right? So, there's so much to each and every one of us, and that's why it makes us such a special and awesome group. Yeah.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right. Next up, we have our high school student rep, Nikhil, I believe, is here this evening. Nikhil, we have changed it up a bit. Please come on down, have a seat at the table, turn on the little red microphone, and we'd love to hear your update.
Testing.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Nikhil, and for today's update, I'm gonna be talking about issues relating to the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. But first, for some quick updates related to the student body. A lot of students are excited for the start of winter sport, sports, and a lot of students feel refreshed after Thanksgiving break, but are still anxious to ninth grade. I'm a junior, and junior year includes a lot of reflecting over what you could have done better in high school. A lot of my friends and just people I talk to point to how they wish they were better prepared and managed themselves better during freshman year, particularly the start of freshman year. This includes myself, too. However, I do not think it is all our fault. I do not think the school adequately prepared us. The academic rigor increases a lot from middle school to high school. You have more homework and tests. There's also a lot more activities available in high school, making schedules even more busier. But the school does not prepare students for this change, making students unprepared for the start of high school and causing them to have less than an ideal start to the year. This is why I and others feel like the school should hold mandatory sessions either at the end of eighth grade or the beginning of ninth grade, teaching students tips and techniques over how to properly manage their time and workload. This will lead to better-prepared students and will set them up well for high school. Thank you for, that's it. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Nikhil. Anybody have a question or comment for Nikhil? Peter?
Nikhil, that's fantastic. That's something I've long been interested in. Are there certain, if, if we expanded the transition program from eighth to ninth grade, are there any certain things that you look back and would like to have seen as part of that transition program that would have helped you?
I think learning how to, like, manage time properly, because like, when you go into high school, you get more like freedom and choice, but you're not really like taught how to manage, how to like manage that freedom and utilize it like to the best of your ability, and you kind of have to learn it yourself. But by like the time you learn it yourself, it's kind of already too late.
Tori?
Nikhil, I really appreciate what you just said, and I want to provide the feedback that I've actually also heard this from a high schooler just this week. We had a lengthy conference that was supposed to be focused on some other things, but started talking about the challenges of managing exactly that, clubs, sports, academics, and I think it's a really useful proposition that you bring forward and a really great idea. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Rebecca, and then Ben, and then Lakshmi.
Hi, I'm over here. I wanted to ask if that was a topic that you all ever discussed in your advisory meetings, especially if you had an opportunity to talk to like some upperclassmen and see maybe what they were doing?
We never really discussed those things at advisory.
So, I'm the parent of an eighth grader right now who will be going into the high school next year. What can an eighth grader do now? And if you were to give my son a recommendation or guidance, what would you say to him right now as he sits in Mr. B.'s class, for example?
I feel like when I was going from eighth grade to ninth grade, I kind of underestimated, like, how much different high school is, and I thought it's like, not gonna be that much of a workload. But I think like a tip is to like, probably listen in class, because then that takes a lot of your workload out.
Lakshmi?
Hi, Nikhil. I have, I have two boys who have gone through high school. They're done a long time ago. So you said it's too late. So I want to understand, what does that mean?
So I'm like a, so if you like, have to figure out how to manage time yourself, you're gonna be in a hole, like, early in the year, and it takes like a lot of, like, work and time to come back from that, and you have to do more now than you would have had to do before, because now you're in a hole. And like, I feel like junior year is kind of too late to make that comeback.
But isn't that a journey rather than a, kind of, point in time, skill to master?
Yeah, but that, you have to like master that skill on your own, but like the school can help you do that and like better set you up for high school.
Thank you.
Pickram?
Yeah, I think this is a really important thing that you're bringing up. I, I wanted to ask you, I mean, certainly it's important, it should be addressed. If there were to be workshops around this, do you think it'd be more beneficial, like, towards the end of eighth grade or sort of in the beginning of ninth grade when you, when one arrives at high school?
I think it'd be better for the beginning of ninth grade, because over summer, you're not gonna really remember.
Good point. Very good point. All right, Nikhil, thank you so much. This is the most engagement that any school committee rep has gotten from the school committee, so it was a great topic, and I look forward to having more school committee reps come and bring engaging topics to us, so thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to the public participation time in our meeting. So per our school committee policy, BEDH, the members of the public are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each. Public participation only takes place during this time in our meeting, so if there's something else on the agenda that you want to speak to, now is the time to speak to that. If you would like to escape because you got your recognition, now is also a great time to go do that. Thank you all very much and congratulations. Anybody wishing to address the committee, please come forward to the mic now. I see you back there, Amanda, now. Plenty of seats down front now. All right, seeing nobody here for public participation, we are going to skip our superintendent's update, because we'll get an update later, and we'll move on to our guests and presentations for goal number one, which is around our social-emotional learning update. So Heather Stausch is here to present this evening. Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Heather Stauk. I am the Coordinator of SEL and Mental and Behavioral Health for the district. I wanted to present to you some of the things that we've been focusing on this year through our work that pertains within goal number one, so, and I've never used this, but I'm sure I can figure it out. Maybe not. Thank you. Thanks. So just as we start to talk about this work, I just want to bring it back to the multi-tiered system of supports. This is something we've talked about frequently over the last couple of years at the district level, and sort of the framework in which we do all of our work at school. It's a data-based problem-solving and decision-making model with tiered interventions and instruction. As you've probably heard, Tier One focuses on the universal access points, so the school-wide initiatives, the classroom-level initiatives, core curriculum, things like that. Tier Two is focused on targeted interventions, and Tier Three is the more intensive supports and needs that a group might have or a child might have. This is the current district goal as stated for the social-emotional and mentally behavioral. The six bucketed areas are the areas of current focus underneath that goal for us. We are doing a lot of work and focus around the evidence-based practices, the targeted supports, expanding the mental health supports that we have here in district, and continuing to work with families and educators around access points for the, both the staff and the students within that realm. What I would like to focus on today is more of the Tier One curriculum, which is new for us at the, it's actually pre-K to 12, and also the Desa Screener Tool, which is new for us at the elementary level, in order to help support the database decision-making that we're moving toward in this space. And also, just a brief, high-level overview of the youth risk behavior survey results from last spring. So starting with the youth risk behavior survey, this was, is, this is an anonymous survey that's conducted every two years. This was our fourth time in district administering. It is a national survey put out by the CDC. We are part of the Emerson Consortium with a group of 10 districts that do this survey. The survey is administered to students in grades six, eight, and nine through 12. Some of the trends that were pulled out of our data from this year, we did have a lot of positive trends that I just wanted to highlight for you. The family and school support came out higher this year than it has in the past, so in comparison to 2022 results. The students feeling like they have a trusted adult at school, also, we're seeing a positive trend in those reporting reports. And when I say positive trend, these are statistically significant trends, not just a couple of points up. The stress management, the ability for the students' self-reports on their ability to handle stressful situations, as well as decreased rates of self-report for depression, self-harm, and suicidal thoughts. While all of those have trended in a positive direction, we've also seen a trend down in the self-reports around some of the risk-taking behaviors in comparison to our 2022 data. So substance use, driving, safe-driving practices, sexting, all of those have either remained stable or trended down since two years ago. Then the areas for growth. So while we did have a lot of the protective factors have increased, which is great, and have been areas of focus for us in terms of, you know, focusing on relationships and students feeling supported and a part of the community across pre-K to 12, we did have an increase in reports of bullying at the sixth-grade level, also the eighth-grade level, their self-reporting that their access and use of social media is too high. And then, we did have, we did have reports, and this was true of the entire aggregate as well, across all 10 districts. We had an increased reporting and access to pornographic material. I would just use a word of caution with that. We actually, from previous administrations, changed the wording on the questions related to this, because what we were finding across the 10 districts was students asking questions about what pornography meant. So we used different language to try and pull out whether or not the student was accessing some of those materials. So, while there may be an increase, it's also statistically difficult to really say that there is, because we actually worded the question very differently. What I will say, though, is our data in terms of the students' self-reporting, of them sending and receiving their own sexting messages or personal images, things like that, did trend down, and that question remained the same. The other thing, although our depression rates have declined according to self-report, they, there are still those pockets, and this is across the aggregate, the number is too small to measure at the individual district level, but there's still pockets of demographics that are experiencing greater rates of depression, including our transgender youth or binary, non-binary, also, some of our South Asian population, as well as our Native Hawaiian and our Pacific Islander populations. But those data points are from the aggregate across the 10 districts. In terms of the Tier One programming, we did start Second Step this year. This is a pre-K to 12 curriculum, which I believe is a first for the district to take on something of that magnitude. This work came out of the task force that was created last year. It was a K-12 task force to identify an SEL program and also a bullying prevention program. The decision was made to move forward with this evidence-based program. They focus on building students' SEL skills and relationship skills, self-management, self-abjectacy. The work works to increase, it uses evidence-based practices and materials to help increase the students' own personal skills, but also to create, there's evidence that it creates a more positive school environment and classroom environment, as well as we work through this. The other thing that it does is, as you can see, it's a pre-K to 12 program. The program is divided out at a very developmentally appropriate level for what that work looks like at those different access points. In addition to the SEL program, we also have either integrated right into the SEL program the bullying prevention units. It's integrated for six through eight, or we have an additional add-on at the elementary level for K through five. K through five, they do five explicit lessons on bullying prevention, and six through eight, they do six explicit lessons on bullying prevention. The focus is on providing a comprehensive plan that works to help students identify and recognize when bullying is occurring, how to report it when it does occur, and how to stand up to it when they are the recipient or see somebody. and how to stand up to it when they are the recipient or see somebody else. The other thing that it works to do is to build empathy and compassion, leave some space for understanding others' perspectives, foster positive relationships, and also works to teach the students how to resolve conflict in a way that is productive and peaceful and respectful. The DESA, too, is a new screening tool that is being implemented this year for the first time, K to six, across elementary schools. This is a way for us to start to use more database decision-making when we're talking about a tiered level of supports for SEL and behavioral, mental health at the elementary level. It is an evidence-based tool. It does focus, it does take a strengths-based perspective. It is CASL-aligned. You can see on the screen that there's actually the five CASL competency areas. The tool is broken in, down into those five CASL competency areas. And then with the addition of the optimistic thinking. CASL is the framework in which the district, pre-K to 12, is framing all of their SEL work and using that language in order to have a more cohesive approach as we move through the district. Their research, the reason for the strengths-based model with the DESA screening tool is really founded in the research in terms of building skills that our students already have and also aligns with our best teaching practices that revolve around universal design for learning, culture-responsive practices, trauma-informed practices. We use this data right now. It is the first year, so there's definitely a growth period. And we're doing a lot of professional development with this right now. But we also, we use the data at both the school level. So look, taking a look at what our trends are at the school level to, for schools to identify what their targets are and what area of work they want to do as a school community. But also at the classroom level to look at our tier one, inform our tier one instruction. What needs to be bolstered, what, what are, what's going well? And at the student level as well to help identify the strengths and areas of growth at the students. The other piece, we are continuing with Cartwheel Care this year. This is our third year under contract. The Cartwheel continues to expand its services. And so I just wanted to give an overview of sort of where we are at this point in the year with this work. They do provide the one-to-one, short-term targeted intervention and therapeutic services. They are doing parent guidance. They also do psychiatric evaluation if their clinical team determines that that was, is a step that is needed for the student. They do medication management. This new this year, they are doing the intensive outpatient program. So they can actually refer to outpatient hospitalization programs directly from their work. Same thing with family therapy. That is a new component that they have expanded their services this year. So if we have a family that is in parent guidance or the student is in one-to-one therapy and the clinical team believes that family therapy would be a good addition to those service delivery models, they will do that as part of their programming. There are no wait lists. We are averaging, and the metrics are updated daily. We are averaging about 40 hours between the time that we make a referral and it's approved at the district level to the Cartwheel Care's first outreach. Several languages are available. We do have students and families that are accessing right now in Spanish, Portuguese, and Mandarin in addition to English. They provide wraparound supports to some of those bilingual families. They also do school supports. They do clinical consult with either school-based teams or with clinicians individually. They do skill-building webinars, and that's what the QR code is there. They have 12, I believe it is, scheduled out over the course of the year. For, and then they also do, they have a portal and work closely with our school-based mental health clinicians if we have our assigned release in order to do that. So it allows us to carry through and support the students within the school environment, some things that are working, being worked on outside the school environment. These are, this is data polled from the end of November. So at this point in the year, by December 1, we had had 57 approved referrals. We have a 72% conversion rate. What that means is that of those approved referrals, 72% of them have gone on to care at this point. It does not mean that the rest of them haven't gone, will not go on to care. There are some still in process. That's why the conversion hasn't happened. So the insurance and, and setting up the scheduling of appointments. We are averaging, our students, our students are averaging about 13 sessions for those that access individual therapy. This year, we also expanded access for our staff in the district. And as of December 1, we had 28 staff members that are seeking and receiving therapeutic services through Cartwheel Care. Our rates at the high school, it's a high school referrals, about 30%. 60% are elementary student referrals and about 10% for the junior high. Our largest reason for referrals in district is anxiety and self-esteem-related concerns. The metrics have been consistently positive from family feedback. That's an aggregate from all of the districts they serve. But it's a 95% positive feedback from both students and families that receive the services. They also see, and again, this is an aggregate, on average, a five-point increase in the anxiety and depression scales that they use from start of treatment to the post-treatment, which is a clinically significant improvement in reporting. Just inactually, our highest rates of referral at this district are grades five, seven, and nine. So what does this mean? What are our next steps? We are working to continue with the evidence-based programming and moving in that direction, implementing Second Step with increased fidelity, providing the supports in order to do that to the educators that are doing the work on the ground. Also providing ongoing professional development opportunities. Using, continuing to expand the use of our data to drive some of our interventions and our planning and our programs and systems with the DESA, the YRBS, schools, culture, and climate surveys, tracking trends over time to inform some of our initiatives that we're working on at district level. And then providing updates and adjusting our plans accordingly. In terms of the areas of growth identified in the YRBS, one of them, the biggest outlier was the bullying at sixth grade. So we are looking to see what the implementation of the new bullying prevention program has on our data in the next data cycle, which would be administered again next year to see if there's any trends to the positive in that work. And also in terms of the depression, we are expanding our signs of suicide screening at the secondary level, specifically the high school, to try and catch more of the students who may be experiencing some of the depressive or suicidal ideation at that level. We hope to continue with our Cartwheel Care and continue to enhance access to mental health services. It's been very positive for us. And also continue to engage with families around the workshops and the webinars and also expanding our partnership, just working at the student level when trying to provide supports for individual children. No, is there any, are there any questions or anything that you would like me to?
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah.
Great presentation. All right, questions? Becca and then Vic.
Hi. I've been enjoying getting all the updates from the district about what different webinars are happening. I think the sort of spectrum of topics has been really nice to see. And it's great to see a lot of positive move in, you know, a lot of different areas. I have got two questions. One is, can we get sort of an idea around how the Cartwheel Care referrals are decided? The denial, since 57 out of 200 seems like a low number, but I don't really know how to sort of measure that. And then my other question is, do we have the ability to sort of tailor the language of the youth risk behavior survey? Or do we have to kind of use what they supply? Because there's two parts that I sort of wonder. The question around porn usage and the high schoolers feeling like they spend too much time on social media. I wonder if questions like that could accidentally sort of reinforce some like shame and stigma.
So for the youth risk behavior survey, we do have, so it's a consortium. So the survey is designed as one survey for all 10 schools that are part of that consortium. But we do have some input into the development of the survey. We also work with, the consortium works with a team of data analysis team and the marketing team in order to be able to help guide us in terms of when to change survey questions, when not to. What, what does that mean for our data? How can we use it? Once the consortium has decided on the local questions, we can't individually as a district change those questions. What we can do is drop a question so we can make a decision not to administer it. Does that make sense? Okay. In terms of Cartwheel, so the 57 out of 200. So the 200 is the amount of referrals that we have contracted that we can make over the course of the year. So 57 is where we're at in the end of November. So we will likely hit that 200. It's not, and at this point, we're on, we're not denying referrals. If we got to a point where we're going to run out of numbers, we may be in a situation where we need to like think a little bit more critically about who, what, which refers are going through. We're not doing that at this point. What we're actually doing is taking a look at the referral, making sure that we're doing what we need to be doing at the school level to meet the students' needs. And then when it rises to beyond what that may, how we can meet that need as a school district, we will make the referral beyond to the Cartwheel Care team. Yeah.
Did we exceed our 200 last year?
We didn't. We, somewhere I have that.
I feel like we were close.
We were. And we had contracted for a little over 200 last year. Last year, we hit 186. And the previous year, we hit 206. And then we made the decision to go in with 200 contracted vows with the budget we had this year.
Great. Thank you. Vic.
I'm, I think I already have the answer, but I'm assuming this is free, the Cartwheel stuff. Is that right?
So it's actually covered by insurance. We do-
Who's insurance, I guess is my question.
The students, the families' insurance. So Cartwheel Care is a referral to an outside therapeutic agency. And so it's billed through insurance like any other medical or mental behavioral health care. When we have a family that does not have access to insurance, we do have 10 spots, slots that the district has set aside funds in order to support the family accessing.
So follow-up question is, then why is there an upper limit of 200 if it's the families ultimately paying for it?
Because not all of the, there's a lot of the structure within the actual program that is not covered. So what they bill for is the one-on-one session. But all of the, the webinars, the clinical consult, all of the, the access that the families, so the reason, we had started with a different referral agency. And we switched to Cartwheel Care so that we could provide our students with direct, and our families with direct access to care. What was happening previously and still happens outside of having access to a program like this is that the waits are months in order to access care. So that's a piece of it, too. It's a direct line to care where our families are not waiting.
Thank you. Forty hours as opposed to 16-plus weeks.
Correct. Or never. And it also has direct access to family therapy and psychiatric care, which families struggle with as well. So, to access outside.
Thank you for everything you've been able to show us and for being involved with this and bringing it to the district. A couple of times you mentioned the levels of anxiety and depression and stress that exist within the community. I'm curious about the drivers and how those drivers are managed. Our student representative spoke earlier about the transition from eighth to ninth grade and the stress that he was dealing with. Do we look at how we manage that source of stress or how we manage the reaction to that stress through the curriculum you're talking about?
Through the curriculum? Through the, yeah. So the SEL program, sorry, your Second Step, yeah. So this is our first time like in, using an evidence-based program and doing a systematic instructional practice around this work. So before, it was more supporting challenges that we were seeing coming up within the population. So now we're trying to take a more proactive approach to teaching the skills at the outset in order to help hopefully mitigate the level of stress and anxiety that builds in students over time or could potentially build in students.
Do you see a role as well in defining a way to manage that cause of stress? Like having too many tests or having too many things going on?
So we have historically in the past used some of the YRBS data in order to inform some of the policies and practices that we shift here at the district and in school committee, actually, too. So we use the YRBS data and the stress levels around that to help shift school start times and our homework policies and our testing policies at the secondary level. So those are the different access points that we do look at.
Thank you. So I really appreciated all, I think it was 88 slides. That was awesome. No, actually, I really did. Because one of the things that jumped out at me is that at the end of all the little tables that had the, the aggregate for all of the districts. And as I understand it, that aggregate includes us in there.
Correct.
Which is interesting because we make up 28% of the aggregate. It's what I noticed is that on all but two of those measures, we were at or doing better than-
That's correct.
The aggregate. So understanding like that, it's already influenced in our direction. That seemed really striking to me.
Yeah.
And something I think we should all pause and appreciate because I think there's been a lot of hard work, as you just mentioned, on doing this. It struck me, there were two places where we were out of line. And I kind of got a chuckle because they feel a little bit related. One was the number of students who reported a social media account their parents didn't know about. So parents, we should all pay attention to this. And also that students eighth grade and older felt they spent too much time on their cell phones. So I don't know what that tells us, but it was just interesting to me that those were the only two of the, how many things we looked at. My question is, I'm curious if and how we use this to validate other data because this is all self-reported, right?
Yep.
And we have things that we count from, things we have observed. And if there were any, any surprises that you saw in this, things that you didn't expect?
I don't think surprise. I was just, I think it's reassuring to see that a lot of the areas that we focused on are the statistically significant shifts. So I think that in itself is validating. And I think it's good for the educators to see that all of that work and that effort that they're putting in is turning around and actually showing us some statistical significant shifts in what our students are experiencing. I don't know if it was a surprise. I just think it was more exciting. Yeah.
Thank you for this presentation. I think it's really helpful to get a presentation about YRBS data in particular. I am biased because I get to do the YRBS for Springfield Public Schools. And one of the things that stood out to me while looking at the data was the part around using cell phones while driving and that being about one in five students. And so not that necessarily were an outlier, but just a note. And so my question was around, like, are there opportunities? Or maybe I'm just not aware that families are getting this information shared out. Maybe not frequency tables, but something that like the average person can understand. And then also, in my work, it's been super helpful to talk to students, to make meaning of the data and think about like, where does this feel like it resonates or doesn't it? What might be helpful? And just wondering if any of that is happening or if there are opportunities to do that in the future.
So they are, so building, buildings are taking it back. It's more to the adults, though, right now to talk about the work that they're doing. We also, it is posted on our district website. And we had had a conversation about sharing out a communication from the district level that the information is there to view on the website now. It is the full 88 slides, and so it's not like, yeah. So maybe there's opportunity to do something different and make it a little bit more accessible. We've not done that in the past, not opposed to that. Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea.
If I can just add to that, Leela, that was a great opportunity to slide in a little public service announcement. You know, thinking of opportunities to talk to kids about the data. On Monday, Monday, we were actually kicking off our first student superintendent school committee advisory council, and so that has been in the works, it's been delayed because we've, you know, had a number of other things, we missed the first meeting, but we're, we're on schedule for meetings two through five, I think, for this year. So that is a group of about 22 students across the district, including, you know, the five student representatives to school committee, as well as the remaining students were chosen, half from individuals who applied and were selected, and then the other half, we actually randomly selected students across the district to try and get a better cross-section of opinions from kids. And then we reached out and invited them, and so we're excited to kick that off, starting on Monday. One of the goals of what we're doing Monday, we're going to actually frame the first meeting around a restorative circle that is meant to build some community within that group, and then also seek from students what they might have as some goals that would make them feel like that was a good use of their time over the course of the school year. But I do think, Leela, that might be an opportunity for us to think about bringing up some topics from the youth risk behavior survey and get some additional student input around, you know, what we might be doing with it. And you'll be there.
We also did have a very preliminary discussion today about the potential for some students that have self-identified an interest in moving some work forward around cellphone use and exploring that a little bit, and maybe we can use some of this data to inform some of their work, but that is very, like, the conversation just happened two hours ago, so. But it's in discussion.
Heather, I have a question about Second Step. Understanding it's a new program, is it something that is going in and replacing maybe what the elementary schools have had in place before, like PBIS? Is it supplemental, is it replacing? And are there, I think particularly at the elementary, at the lower levels, is there materials going home about maybe some of that curriculum that helps carry the language and that, that through in the home life as well?
So Second Step does have a pretty robust, like, family access point and, that they can use, to be honest. It's a new curriculum of, and the educators are trying to navigate several new curriculums right now, and so that's part of the work, I think, over the long term, is trying to make that a more robust communication system. Some are using it, some are probably not right now. But the materials are there, and it's encouraged, and it is part of the programming itself. In terms of the replacement piece, there wasn't, it doesn't really replace anything except that there was one school, if you go back a few years ago, used to use Open Circle, which has sort of, you know, the curriculum is pretty outdated at this point, and the school wasn't using it any longer with any level of fidelity. It more complements the other work that we're doing in terms of the positive behavioral supports that this, each individual school is doing, also our responsive classroom work, which I talked a little bit about last year. It all aligns with it, it doesn't replace it.
Thanks. And I had another question about the bullying. So we saw a report of increased bullying at some levels in the YRBS. Does that bullying, or do we see an equal sort of reporting, and maybe it's too soon, but you know, Jen came two, two meetings ago and talked to us about the incidence of hate and bias and some of the bullying reporting that we're going to see there? Do we see an alignment between maybe what's self-reported and then what gets followed up in the dashboard that she's putting together?
I don't know the answer to that, actually.
Great.
I'd have to ask Jen.
I stumped you.
You did. I was doing so good.
The last is more of a comment than it is a question, which is, you talked, at the beginning, you sort of covered all of the SEL topics, and advisory being one in there.
Yeah.
For several years, we've talked about advisory, the sort of evolution of that at the, the secondary level. And I'm curious, not necessarily how well it's going, but are there entrances, again, for topics like Second Step and maybe some of the topics around YRBS? And like, we asked our, our student rep today, like, some of those challenges that you're having, are there, are there avenues to that, to come into advisory? Are we starting to see those opportunities now?
Yeah, we're starting, we're starting to expand those dialogues, really, is what's happening. Our, our shifts in the advisory program at the secondary level to this point, two years in, have largely been driven by student reports and reflections for restructuring for the following year. What we did start this year though, is to integrate more of the CASL language and also the Second Step language as an ask to try and expand some of those advisory programs and access points. And so the junior high in particular is structuring around the same CASL framework now that we're trying to integrate at the elementary level. So that's sort of how we are moving in that direction.
Excellent. All right, one, one last round around the table here. Anybody else have a last question or comment? Vikram?
You said this just started this year, did it really just start this month, in fact?
Which?
The...
Advisory?
Yes.
No, so advisory started at the secondary level two or three years ago. So it's work that's been ongoing and evolving, it's evolving.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you Heather. We are going to move on to our ongoing business. First item on the ongoing business is a update and request to change the elementary budget task force membership. So I'm going to hand this over to Tori. Tori, I'm going to give you this time to give us both a, a quick update from your task force meeting, which was two nights ago, and then a quick overview of what we're asking the committee to vote on here.
Cool. So, yeah, we met on Tuesday night, and it was probably my favorite meeting thus far, because we actually got everybody up out of their seats and talking and writing things down and figuring things out. So basically, we went through three exercises. One was to take a look at all of the recommendations that had been given and identify potential benefits, concerns, unintended consequences, and other issues. And so there will be a very robust list of that coming out. And then a couple of exercises to identify some areas of initial consensus, and they were a little bit painful, because the first one we got handed was a list of some potential options and what savings might be there, and we'd just been through consequences and concerns, and so everybody was tasked with figuring out, if you wanted to save $400,000, what would you do? Okay, now make that seven, now make that a million. And so going through and making some of those hard decisions. So had some good discussion around that, and then closed out with a spend bucket exercise, which was basically if you had $100 and you could invest it in all of these different recommendations, which ones would you invest in and how much? And so it gives you a really good sense of kind of where people are at with what they think is really important, where the room feels about a number, you know, is there a lot of consensus around something being a direction we ought to go, et cetera? So it was a good discussion. I think probably the biggest takeaways there is that we could hear some, some pushing for some budgetary savings and some shifts in the things that we're doing, and also realizing that there is no recommendation we can take that doesn't have consequences. There are going to be changes, there are going to be hard decisions, there are going to be things that if we do them differently, there will be second and third order effects. So that was really good. We're at it again next Tuesday to figure out what the priorities are going to be and then to put together what we bring forward to this group.
I think we should take your foreshadowing to just imply that those consequences and difficult choices are going to come in front of this committee, because the task force is only tasked with giving us recommendations. In the end, it's going to be this group that has to make some of those tough decisions, so be prepared.
Yes. And then kind of an update to our membership, we had a staff member come forward and raise a hand and say, I have something to contribute. Maren Gulliver, who's one of our coaches, definitely one around the team, so we've brought forward an updated list. Also, formally removing two members who've not been able to attend due to time conflicts, because frankly, I want to be able to make quorum as quickly as possible and get on with the good stuff.
So is there a vote to approve the elementary budget task force updated membership list?
So moved.
That was Vikram and then Leela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous? Thank you very much. All right, so a quick note here, you're all going to be very happy that our meeting's going to go slightly quicker this evening, because in, in having finally an executive session on our agenda, we were focused very much on that part of the agenda and totally forgot to put all of the member reports and communication goal update on the agenda, realized that yesterday at 3:00 PM, which was too late to add it to the agenda. So there won't be member reports or updates this evening. But as the chair, I just want to highlight one item, because I can do that, and we're not going to debate it, that, you know, I think there's been some really good discussions at the ALG, and that process seems to be moving forward really well. ALG is different than the, the Boxborough Leadership Forum, which doesn't really exist right now in its current incarnation, in that we have reps there, and those reps are Yan Chen and Tori. They're there really to speak for the committee as a whole, and so I think there may be some topics that they'll bring back to us at some point where we'll need to discuss and give a sense of the committee, so that the, the ALG can understand where the committee stands on some of those topics that come in front of the, the ALG. With that, let's move on to the consent agenda. Remember, items on consent agenda don't require discussion typically and are approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold them for discussion or a separate vote. I'll read each item, and if a member would like that item held, you just say hold. Members don't have to be present at a meeting to vote on the minutes. Item number, letter A, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of November 14th, 2024. Item B, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of November 21st, 2024.
Hold.
And item C, approval of warrants as presented in the packet 12-5, 2024. All right, so we had an item held, I'm going to look at my cheat sheet here on the agenda, which says, "The following item has been held and will be voted on separately," and that's the meeting minutes from the 21st of November. Is there a mo, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I got a, I got a moved from over there from Ben, and then a second from Tori, was it? Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Great, that's unanimous. Becca, comments or some amendments to the November 21st?
Yes, I'd like to make a amendment to the meeting minutes from November 21st. It seems that my vote for the Boxborough MOU was incorrectly documented, I was a nay vote.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we're going with Leela on that, and then Vikram for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None, that is unanimous. I will just add in here that after that vote on the Boxborough MOU, I now have a handy spreadsheet that calculates votes for me with the weighting, so I don't have to look like a fool anymore. With that... Oh, I shouldn't have paused! Wait, you had your opportunity for an update earlier this evening. All right, Peter, what do you have?
So this isn't so much a superintendent update, but, one, I've appreciated, and it would be nice, you know, as we go through the year to get some feedback about how we've structured meetings over the last couple of months, because we've now settled into our groove where the first meeting of the month is focused on educational topics and goals of the district, and we don't do a lot of business during that meeting intentionally to provide more time for questions and answers back and forth. And then the other meeting of the month, the third, the third week of the month, is really focused on the business of the committee, where we don't put a lot of heavy educational topics on, so that we can spend more time digging into different topics. So I'd love to hear feedback as time goes on on that. But that, I believe, is a primary factor, is what's driven the total duration of meetings down. And yet I feel like the dialogue around issues has been actually deeper. So hopefully you're feeling the same thing, but as I said, we'd love to get feedback about that as we go. I want to prepare you though, you've had a couple of meetings in a row now where they've been relatively short duration. Next meeting is going to be an important meeting. I just want to share, you know, one, we have the elementary budget task force findings being presented to you, which I'm sure will be a healthy topic of discussion, and it also will probably involve a pretty detailed presentation. So we have that, we have an overview of the capital plan coming in, which is kind of the refresh of our, you know, 10-year capital plan. As part of that, some of the late-breaking news, and I talked to Ben, who is the chair of the capital subcommittee just before this, but we ended up having a meeting with Train, who makes, you know, HVAC systems. If you recall, you know, I've updated you, I think, at least once, that the rooftop units at Parker Damon are past the end of their useful life by about five years, but they're also failing. And we actually have an opportunity to upgrade all nine of those rooftop units and pay $0 for the actual units based on rebates that are currently available. If we sign on to that program through, you know, by December 31st, the only thing we'd be responsible for is the actual installation of the units and upgrades of the infrastructure that talks between the control system that we just purchased last year, so that's good, and those rooftop units. So that would save us probably about $300,000 if we move ahead with that. So we will probably be bringing that forward even despite the fact that it didn't make it to Capital Sub this morning, because the meeting with the, the company was this afternoon. So my apologies for the timing of that, but we decided that that was important enough to, to try and move forward. We'll also have the FY24 audit report available in the packet and be able to answer any questions that you have about that, and at least give you a brief summary of that. And then we want to give you a very brief summary of the OPEB trust at that point as well, just so you know where that stands. Neither of those are really long topics, I don't think. And then we might have, you know, potential policy updates, depending on where Policy Sub stands at that point. So, you know, I just want to have you plan ahead for that, you know, bring sleeping bags, you know, whatever you need to do, but, but that will be an important meeting next time.
And then I'll just say thank you to those who filled out the, the attendance spreadsheet. Please, if you haven't completed it for the next meeting, do so before the end of the meeting, and if you think you're going to have a conflict, please check in there so that we do make sure that we reach quorum, that's the important part. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. All right, so that was Leela and then Ben, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, have a wonderful evening.